A special meeting, it is Wednesday, September the 29th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. In order to prevent and mitigate the effects of COVID-19 pandemic and limit potential spread within the city of Morro Bay in accordance with Executive Order Number N 08-21, the city will spread, will not make, excuse me, available a physical location from which members of the public may observe the meeting and offer public comment. However, remote public participation is allowed, and we will be displaying that information on how you can access this meeting on the screen at the appropriate time that we offer up public comment. I'll ask the clerk if you can establish a quorum, please, Ms. Watson.
Yes, of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Hiddings.
Present. So we do have a quorum, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This evening, or this afternoon, I should say, we are entertaining a special meeting to get a report from staff on our major goals and accomplishments during the last couple of years with regard to those goals. That, of course, was part of our packet this evening. We will be receiving the staff report first, and then, council, if you have any clarifying questions just about what was presented, I'll open it up for that, not necessarily the beginning of the goal discussion, but just any clarifying questions you might have for Mr. Collins or the staff with regard to their presentation. And then, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public comment after council questions, allow the public to weigh in, and then I will turn it back over to our esteemed facilitator, who Mr. Collins will introduce, and will engage in a lively discussion on the future of our city. This is a, this is a special time, we have been fortunate enough to receive multiple inputs to date from our community. I want to thank our advisory committees and our planning commission for their input. It's contained in the staff report, but I'm calling it out because those groups took significant time to consider our existing goals and examine the future of Morro Bay from their perspective and provided input, and I very much, and I know council does, value the input from our advisory boards, and the summary of that information obviously is contained again in the staff report. In addition to that, our Chamber of Commerce did a great independent job representing the business community of evaluating our existing goals, commenting on those, and then also, from the business perspective, engaged in a process of evaluating what they see as future needs for the city. And so I want to just thank the chamber in advance for all of the work that they did. Thank Ms. Crawford, their chief executive officer, their committees that worked on this, and I always appreciate their very succinct and comprehensive write-up that they present to the council. So my thanks to the chamber from council for that. In addition, we have used something called Polco, P-O-L-C-O, to allow the public to give input to the city in a number of different areas, but especially with goals. A number of surveys have been done, we have received multiple inputs from the community, that's included in your summary as well, and I just want to thank our community members that engaged and responded to some of the issues that are there and offered up their comments. And then lastly, we've had a number of different meetings where we've had public comment on goals in the past. We haven't done a major review, and over two years, we were paused because of COVID-19, as you recall, and held off in anticipation that we might be able to gather live to have our goal session. But unfortunately, because of the continued presence of the pandemic, we felt that we needed to move forward with this process and go ahead and do it remotely, thusly our special meeting this evening, which again is another opportunity for our community to weigh in. This isn't the final or the last meeting on goals, this is part of the process and will be further delineated and further articulated by staff. This evening, we hope to attain more or less what I'll call, and our facilitator will say it much better than I, but more or less the high-level areas that the city needs to address, what I'll call broad categories, or broad areas that goals should be articulated in, and then staff will come back and bring to us objectives. So tonight isn't about writing a bunch of objectives and details with regard to the plan itself, but really trying to land with four or five or so major areas where the city needs to focus in on over the next two years. Then we'll come back again, have public comment, look for public input from our community on those areas, and specifically some objectives that will be delivered to us from staff. So that's, that's the process for this evening, that's where we've come from, we do this every two years, we look at goals in a major way, and every year, of course, we get reports. You do have a report in your packet from staff on the goals for 2019, 2020, and the actions associated with those. We always develop an action plan that has measurable objectives with expected outcomes, and that report also is in the packet tonight. And I just want to thank council and staff for the tremendous amount of work that has been achieved over this last period of time. If you really look at the content of that, everybody's been working hard, and much has been accomplished over the last couple of years when we last set goals in the city, and for that, I'm proud of our staff, proud of the leadership in our community, but most of all, I'm proud of our community for engaging, for helping us set direction and for guiding us, and we appreciate that greatly. The way I speak about the city, it's not my asset, it's the city's asset, it belongs to the people, and thusly, the direction that's provided is not the culmination of five people setting the direction for the city, but the collective voice of our community members representing the diversity of our community is so critically important to setting the future of this city. And, and I just want to say again, and I know our council is very much aware of this, that this is your asset, folks, this is your city, and your input is greatly valued and will be considered significantly as we set direction as policymakers, and, and I'm proud of our council for how they've engaged in the past, again, proud of our staff for the work that they do to implement our plan, and looking forward to a lively discussion with a facilitator tonight so that the mayor doesn't have to do all the work, but I get to rest after all this stuff and actually participate. So Summer, you'll be introduced a little later, but we're glad to have you here, and Mr. Collins will introduce you and give a little history of your work and what you do, but thank you for joining us this evening. So with that long-winded introduction, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Collins, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff here, and community members, Summer, of course. So we're kicking off the city goals workshop, and thank you for that introduction, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen for a brief PowerPoint presentation, I think I'll do this correctly this time, all right? Can everybody see that okay?
Yes, Scott.
Very good, all right. So jumping right in. So just briefly, going to give you an update on the city goals, the current goals and action items, action items being the things that help achieve the goals, talk about the process to date for revising our goals, the input we've received, both online and from our advisory boards and business boards, take public comment, have a facilitated discussion, and then talk about next steps for the goals. As it stands currently, we have four permanent goals, if you will, and one temporary goal for COVID, don't need to read the screen for you, you can see them, I think we're all well accustomed to those now, we've been working with these for about the last three, three-plus years. We have 26 corresponding quote-unquote "action" items, which again are those that, those discrete actions that we can take to help achieve the goals. Not going to go through all of these, but these are the action items we've completed that were identified back in 2018, 19 timeframe, you know, a lot, lot focused on our fiscal health, but also some policy areas as well. These are the action items that we've made really good progress in, but still have a little bit more work to do, and again, runs the gamut from planning into more of the, some of the projects that we're working on, as well as some financial issues. And then last, we have some items that still require significant more time before we'd be able to complete those. So that rounds out those 26 action items that council approved as part of the work plan a couple of years ago. As far as the goals process is concerned, as the mayor mentioned, we typically start the goals process right after an election, so that would normally be in the January timeframe, but we ran into the COVID issue, so we've delayed that up till the mid-year. We ran a survey through the summer, the council had an update on the goals in late August, and then we have this facilitated workshop today. We will bring forward the outcome of this discussion, as well as the objectives and action items for council's consideration later in October, early November, and then we try to do our best to provide quarterly updates throughout the year once those goals are established. Community survey results, you know, we asked about four or five questions, again, all that information is in the attached staff report, but typically, you know, generally speaking, the community appreciates and is satisfied with our quality of life here in Morro Bay, they love the small-town environment that's offered here, as well as the, the nature that comes with this very unique setting that we have here, and they feel it's very important to preserve what we have, not let it be lost. In terms of the issues that are most pressing for our community members, financial, economic sustainability continues to rise to the top, some public safety issues, maintaining cleanliness and making improvements in our city infrastructure. In addition to those issues, they felt we need to maybe ramp up our efforts in how we manage tourism, the impacts of tourism, and protect the environment, and complete the water reclamation facility project. The city advisory boards all weighed in, and here's a very succinct summary of, of their major recommendations. Planning Commission, you know, looking at historic preservation, tree program, climate action plan, looking at finance and business improvement districts, and implementing our housing element. Harbor is more focused on revenues, making sure the zoning code makes sense for the lease sites there, parking, infrastructure, Market Street Plaza, and offshore wind. Public Works is focused more on resiliency, cleanliness, and improving our infrastructure. The citizen finance advisory committee wants us to focus on impact fees, you know, redoing the cost allocation plan, you know, connecting with Public Works on infrastructure funding and evaluating our pension and other liabilities. Record, wreck, and parks, and keep on current course. As was mentioned by the mayor, two of our business boards, the Tourism Business Improvement District and Chamber of Commerce weighed in. T-Bid, you know, said keep focus on cleanliness and beautification, and Chamber of Commerce had a pretty comprehensive letter that was submitted that looked at four areas of sanitation and beautification, affordable housing, traffic circulation, and infrastructure improvements. So I'll stop here to see if there's any council questions about that information, again, this, basically the same information was provided at the end of August, and at that time, we'd received 120 responses on Polco, and I think we ended up at about 180, so we saw a pretty good increase in the number of responses. It really didn't move the numbers much from August.
Great, thank you, Scott, appreciate the overview. Go ahead and ask councilmembers if you have any clarifying questions on Scott's information that he presented. Councilmember Heller, I see your hand, sir, thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, I am assuming that the goal setting here will carry us through the rest of this calendar year and through the end of calendar year 2022, am I correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Heller, that's probably the last slide after Summer does her thing, but yeah, usually how it works, it would be the remainder of this year, all of next year, and of course, there's an election in 2022, new council seated, it's going to take several months for, for them to focus on goals, so it sort of carries into that new term as well for a few months, but yeah, mostly it's focused on this year and next year.
So we're looking at setting goals for about 14 months.
Yeah, more or less, yeah.
Yeah, before the next, you know, iteration of review, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other council member questions on the information that Scott presented? Seeing no hands. I'll just make one comment, I think, that's important, and remind you that, you know, the overall goals for the city inform both the operating and capital budget. So always keep in mind that there's funding required for major initiatives and goals, and, and the right way to think about it is that the, the major goal areas and objectives inform the development of the operational and capital budget for each year, so just that clarification. Okay, seeing no further questions, I will, whoops, go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for the special meeting agenda items only this evening, this is not general public comment, we're looking for public comment on our goals and objectives, and I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment. Of course, the information on how to access a public comment is on the screen, you can do it by phone, as you see, and/or by clicking on or entering in the link that's shown on the screen, and you'll have three minutes for public comment, and I will ask, Island, go ahead and open up public comment, and do we have any members of the public that wish to speak, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue. Wait, I'm sorry, we have one raised hand from Erica Crawford.
Great, welcome, Erica.
Good afternoon, Art of a Mayor and Council, I don't have any prepared remarks this evening or this afternoon, but I did just want to express how kind of heartened I am by the working group that's assembled. I think you got some agenda correspondence from Christine Johnson with Pacific Wildlife Care. We've been doing some good work with some of your city staffers, members of the business community, to take sort of a, a good look from multiple perspectives on a very complex issue that is sort of food waste and animal, you know, behavior and human behavior. So I just, I wanted you to know that that's a really great positive development and a good collaboration that's forming in your community, thank you.
Thank you, Erica, and I did receive that email, and I think council did as well, and had the opportu, opportunity to review it, and we thank you for mentioning that tonight. Island, do we have any other public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I will go ahead then, and I will close public comment, bring it back here for our facilitated workshop, and ask Mr. Collins to introduce our facilitator this evening. Thanks, Scott.
Yes, and before I do that, I wanted to make mention of, one important thing, I got through my presentation very quickly and forgot a very important point. I know, and Mayor, I know the councilmembers have all done this already, but I just wanted to thank staff for their incredible work in, in getting those action items done, those checked off the list, which were not easy, especially in a COVID-19 pandemic era. And also wanted to note that, you know, these goals are really sort of forward-thinking and innovative and looking into the future. What's not necessarily captured in them is the day-to-day work of your, your city employees, like particularly public safety, code enforcement, planning, water and sewer, you know, all the, all the services that our community relies upon aren't necessarily captured there, and I, and I think that's a good thing, that we, we sort of have that booked, we, we know we can rely upon those services because city council has invested in those services, and it's what our community depends upon, and community has come forward with measure Q and measuring the past to continue to fund those services. So I don't want that to get lost in this, and we appreciate all the work of every single employee, and again, we're only able to look into the future because we have the dependable services nailed down by our staff. So just wanted to just make sure that was noted in case our employees are listening, and then also very excited to introduce, let me share my screen again, let's see here, I can do it forward. Summer, and I'm sorry, you know what, I don't know if I actually can pronounce your name correctly, is it, is it Curly?
Curly, you got it.
All right, I was close, all right, very good. So Summer is the CEO for the Center for Organization Effectiveness, I always want to say organizational, so, organization effectiveness. For the last 10 years, the CEO of the center, every day, Summer engages with executive leadership and elected officials throughout the state of California on high-stake projects and strategic planning, and has served both the city of San Luis Obispo and Paso, and probably other cities in this county. She has a pulse on current dynamics in the state, as well as local government, in navigating what is required to get things done. Tying complex, big-picture elements to the realities of day-to-day operations is Summer's favorite playground. She has a PhD and master's degree in industrial and organizational psychology from the California School of Professional Psychology, and a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Santa Clara University. Summer completed a fellowship at the UCSF Change Agent Program, and she is also the 2018 Woman to Watch Award recipient from the San Diego Women of Influence Awards, and I know she's spoken to each of the councilmembers, she came highly recommended by cities that we look up to, and I'm, I'm so grateful that she's able to help facilitate this important discussion today. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Summer, and of course, I will manage the slide, so just tell me when you'd like me to advance those, if you don't like.
And Summer, let me just, on behalf of the council, welcome you, we're blessed to have you with your background and all the work that you've done, and excited about what's going to happen this evening, and thank you for spending the time with each of us that you did, I wanted to make sure the public knew that independently, a member of the council interacted with Summer to kind of talk through not only process, but to give inputs on the city, and we appreciate that, just want to say, welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You all are setting the bar very high, so I hope I can meet that here this evening. I realize this is a really different goal-setting workshop in the sense that we aren't physically all together, and I wish I was sitting there in Morro Bay with you all and having this conversation, but what is consistent is that it will be an engaging and a highly interactive opportunity for you all to share your input and thoughts, and to make sense of all of the community input that you've received thus far. I really, as, as city manager Collins was mentioning, I've done quite a lot of this work, and different cities and counties do it different ways, and I really applaud the amount of rigor that has gone into evaluating your goals, setting goals in the first place, but evaluating those goals, and then staff really taking the time to identify short-term and long-term actions that can be taken, and knowing that sometimes things change, right? If we've all learned anything over the last 18 months, it's that, and that you have to shift and pivot and figure out what you can actually accomplish in a timeframe. And so today, I hope it really is a continued dialogue of where you've been as a city, and for this point in time, really what, what the next steps are to set up a great future for Morro Bay. I do want, because I know you all have been running, having busy days, doing things other than being councilmembers and sitting in this meeting, and so I'd love for you to just, help you transition a little bit, get your mindset into our conversation today by reflecting for a minute, and you don't need to share this with the group today, so this is really your personal reflection for a minute, but get your mind around, reflect on it, on the time that you really have had your most pride-filled moment, being a council member at Morro Bay, being the mayor at Morro Bay, councilmember Ford as a brand-new councilmember being, maybe being on the planning commission, right, your other roles that you've played, what's really your most pride-filled moment in being a leader for Morro Bay? And hopefully that comes to you quickly, for some of you, that might be something that just happened in the last week, for others, that might have been something that happened years ago. But I want you to think about, what was that project, who were you working with, how did that feel? And my goal here for us today is that we create more of that, we create a pathway today for more of that to happen for Morro Bay. It'll probably be different projects, it might be different players at the table to execute on those projects, but that it's that kind of pride that you all experience because of what you've set forth today, and the conversations that you have today as a group. So the goal both the city manager and the mayor highlighted, and, and city manager Collins, you can go to the second, the next slide here, really our goal here today is to, is to provide clear direction to city staff. So really, our goal is not to get into the weeds and the wordsmithing of specific goal statements or specific measurements of, of what we're going to accomplish, and as councilmember Heller had mentioned, the timeline for these goals is really intended to be the balance or the remainder of 2021, and then into calendar year, the entirety of calendar year 2022, that's really our focus here, so it's a little bit, it's less than a full two years, certainly, for obvious reasons that we already discussed. And so really, our goal is to say, in that timeframe, what are these key areas that the city staff needs to be focusing attention on, and then the city staff will take that direction and identify what are those short-term objectives or initiatives or action items that need to take place, and what are maybe some of the longer-term ones? Certainly, depending on what you land on, as being these key goal theme focus areas, that some of them may be very quite long-term to actually affect change on, and so they may extend and be on your goal list for multi-years, right, they may go on and on and on. You may choose to carry over some of the things that are currently on your goal list, but what we really want to walk out of here this evening with is clear direction on those four, five, six, three, some manageable amount of theme areas, goals for the city staff to focus on, and then some, some clear direction on within that, what does that mean, right? So within, I'll use as an example, public infrastructure is something that's been on the goal list in the past, I have a feeling it will likely end up on the one this evening, based on the input and my pre-conversations with the councilmembers, and we want to clarify for this, what within public infrastructure do we really want that focus to be over the next 14-plus months? So that's really our intention this evening. City manager Collins, if you can go to the next slide. I just wanted to echo a little bit about what was just being mentioned about the, the larger purpose of the city of Morro Bay, which is up here on the screen here, to provide essential public services and infrastructure to maintain a safe, clean, and healthy place for residents and visitors to live, work, and play. There are tons of city services that often don't make it onto a goal list because you are already doing that work so proficiently, and that does not mean if it doesn't make it onto a goal list that it's not critical work, essential work that needs to continue to happen, that it serves and meets the purpose of the city, but that what we often want to put into a goal list are primary focus areas, or where we need to put additional resources or shift resources in order to really accomplish those goals. So that's, that's really typically the focus, although this council, you obviously can choose what you'd like to put onto the, as goal themes, but that is often why we won't see regular city services on a, on a goal list, so just to keep that in mind. I did want to remind, the mayor had shared a bit that I had the opportunity to do one-on-one meetings with each of the councilmembers, and really the intention for that as pre-work for the session here this evening is to take the community input, we do, we do that this evening, is to take the community input. We do that after the council has had the opportunity to review the results from Polco, several meetings, obviously, with public comment, as well as many of the bodies of feedback that come in from the commissions and the advisory boards. And for me to then have an opportunity to ask them what they see as being really top priorities, key areas we need to focus attention on, based upon all of that input. And the purpose for doing that is to see in advance of this evening, what are really, where is there really clear alignment? And where might there be some misalignment that we need to have more dialogue on? That helps me as a facilitator plan the sessions. We can have a really meaningful conversation. And what came from those conversations, that there really is quite a lot of alignment around four critical areas. Some of them are already on the goal, the current goals. Some of it is new. But the focus within those, I think it's fair to say there's a bit of a nuanced shift, because the city has done a great job of accomplishing many of the objectives within the current goals, that the shift is, there is a shift that's needed to occur within some of the, this next year's goal areas. So City Manager Collins, if you don't mind advancing the slide, and we'll put up there, these are the four areas, and you can just advance it to show, there we go. These are the four areas where there really was alignment in my conversations with the council members and in looking at the various opportunities for input from the community that we received, that really around public infrastructure being a huge component, which is obviously continuation on what we've had in the current goals. The second one around, and these are not necessarily in any particular order, but the second one listed here, fiscal sustainability and economic vitality. So you'll notice a slight change in some wording there. These are not set in stone wording-wise. By all means, there's, these are open for discussion, of course. But I think within that fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, we can have some really good conversation about what that means to provide city staff some direction on that. The third area that was identified is around housing, and really making sure that housing is accessible and that you have enough of it in the city of Morro Bay. And then the fourth area, which really is new to the list, is around climate action. And this was identified by various areas within the community input, as well as by the council members, as being an area that certainly we won't be able to fix within the next 14 months, but that we should be taking steps in that direction. And so what are the local steps that can be taken to affect and to take climate action? So those were really the four areas. What I would like to recommend is, in just a few minutes, I have one other context-setting element I'd like to set before we dive into discussion. But what I'd like to ask is that we will walk through each of these four one at a time. And that as we do that, that we have an opportunity to hear from each of the council members, as we talk about public infrastructure, for you to be able to highlight what that really, what does success in that area look like in your mind? You know, what is at this point in time for the city of Morro Bay, what do we really need to be taking steps around to meet this moment? So it may not just be public infrastructure in general. The city will continue to do the essential services it provides. But what about public infrastructure in this moment? And so as an example, some of what I've been reading from the community input, and certainly from our one-on-ones, work around sanitation, cleanliness, tourism management seems to be elements within this moment of in time for the city of Morro Bay that need to take a front seat when we talk about public infrastructure. What I will be doing is we have that conversation, just so you have a sense of the process flow. I won't share my screen with the notes that I'm taking. I'll keep this so that you can see one another as you're speaking. But I'll be taking notes on what are kind of the, what are the focuses within that goal area? And then if you've identified any short or long-term action areas, I will highlight those, I'll note those, so that we really have a document we can share with city staff for them to flesh out further with clear objectives, action items, timelines, whatnot. Once we get through all of these four, if there are additional pieces that any of the city council members feel were not identified in one of these four. So there might be items that you really wanted to highlight and didn't fit in to any of these four areas. And we may have a fifth area that you want to highlight. Or for example, if you wanted to separate out fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, at that point, we would do that at the end of the session and figure out if there's potentially a fifth goal area that needs to be added to the list. Any questions about the process before I highlight one more context-setting piece, and then we'll dive into the dialogue? Any questions from the council on the process? Okay. So City Manager Collins, if you could advance the next slide. I wanted to share this model, and in a minute, I'll share the new partnership wheel as well. If you've not seen this model, I think it's a really helpful wheel to describe often how we approach inappropriately big problems or issues within our cities that need to be addressed. And this was created by Ray Pichette, who is a well-respected city manager. And then it was cited, has been cited actually several times, but the first place I read it was from Ed Everett, who's also a well-respected city manager. And he was writing an article about how to do fantastic community building, which the city of Morro Bay has already been doing quite a lot of that. And this model that they shared is that often we make the mistake of putting local government in the middle of any kind of issue that we need to be solving, and that local government is then seen as the fixers of any issue that is present in a city. And all of these circles around the local government are then people who are more like customers of the city's services or of the solutions that come from city staff. And if you advance to the next slide, really where we want to be in is that we put the topic or the issue in the center of that circle. And you notice that local government moved to one of those other circles on the outside to say, those are really, the local government is a convening source to bring all the different stakeholders to the table to solve what may be in instances pretty gnarly issues, and that the city can't solve those or resolve those in and of itself as an entity, that it really requires the full community to support that. So I wanted to highlight that because I think often when we get into conversation about goals, it can be easy for a city council and then for city staff to feel that they own the entirety of fixing something. And the reality is, most of the things that we're talking about cannot be fixed solely by one organization. They are, you take climate action as an example, right? It is a much broader issue that needs the full community's support to accomplish. I think you have that alivened well in this community from how much community input you've received and the alignment from the commissions and the advisory boards and the chamber, and the amount of input that you've received from the community. But I do want to frame that, and I might bring you back to this at times, that we may be saying, hey, the step, one of the steps we want to see for the city is really convening of these other groups in this resolution or in approaching an issue, as opposed to the city alone needing to, or even being able to resolve such a thing. So I think we can stop sharing at this point, the screen. And I will, just to give you a preview of what I will be tracking, at this point, you're going to see that it's blank, so it will not look very impressive. But as we talk, or as you talk, I will be filling in this table essentially. So I've highlighted here, our purpose as a city, which was previously on that slide. And that what we'll be doing is, if these are the four goal themes, I'll be asking you one at a time, we'll go through these. I'll be putting in some notes here on the focus within that goal theme, and then identifying if there are any potential short-term or long-term action items that are highlighted. That's really the role of the city staff to flesh this out further. But certainly, I like to take notes on that, because often there's fantastic ideas that come that we can note and put in here. Certainly, if we then, once we get to the end of this, if we want to add a fifth or sixth goal or whatnot, goal theme, we can do that. This is not set in stone by any means. But this is the template that I'll be completing as we are talking. So if we start with public infrastructure, and I will get this started, and then welcome any of the mayor, the council members to share their thoughts. In this public infrastructure space, much of what I think we're reading in the community input, as well as in the one-on-ones I had with many of you, is really focusing in on some of the sanitation and cleanliness, infrastructure related to much of the tourism that is present in, very alive in Morro Bay. So thoughts, as you think about public infrastructure, what you really see as being success? What would a great outcome over the course of the next 14 to 16 months look like if Morro Bay was to address some of the public infrastructure dynamics at this moment in time? So who would like to get us started? All right, Councilmember Addis.
Thank you, Summer. And I want to also say thank you for being able to meet one-on-one with you. I found that very valuable. And say thank you to staff as well. I know a lot of hard work goes into this. And I absolutely agree that if we weren't in a good space already, we wouldn't be able to think bigger about the future. But when I think about public infrastructure and public spaces and success, it would be having a plan and being able to address our capital project needs, as well as our water security. We already have the One Water Plan, and I would very much like to see us finish that out, but also have funding opportunities for other capital projects that we might need. I'm going to put traffic circulation under this umbrella of infrastructure, even though some might say it's not really infrastructure. But especially along the Embarcadero, getting into and leaving Morro Bay should be easy when there's a holiday, like the boat parade or the Fourth of July, or just beautiful weather down at the Rock. I envision a Morro Bay that's easily accessible, but also easy to leave when it's time to go home. And then finally, having a clean city that also is sensitive to animals and animal habitat. I want to appreciate the chamber who has started a working group that is addressing this issue. And I absolutely agree that the topic is at the center, and the city is one of our partners. But I see a clean Embarcadero and a clean city that also attends to the health and well-being of our wildlife population, which is one of the reasons people come here. And that's it for me on this one.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Others that want to echo and/or add to what Councilmember Addison? Yes, Councilmember Heller.
Yes, thank you, Summer. Thank you so much for working with us on this. I'm really looking forward to this. And the time you spent with us individually was extremely productive and just really happy to have you here. In looking at all this information from the advisory committees, it's just, it's remarkable how many people are involved in making this city better and better all the time. In this particular category, what I see over and over again, when I look at Public Works comments, when I look at the chamber's comments, I see cleanliness and sanitation as the key issue. And it's not only a health and safety issue, but it's an economic issue. And I consider it an emergency, frankly. We've been overwhelmed with tourists in the last 18 months or so. We've struggled to manage our trash, which we have done a good job with, but we're still not there. We've had to deal with traffic, which Councilmember Addis mentioned, which I think is important. But keeping a city clean sends a huge message. And I think from a health and safety standpoint, we should focus on that for the next 12 months. By that, I mean the Embarcadero and Morro Bay Boulevard, the primary business districts. Be cleaned up. From a health and safety standpoint, the crosswalks need to be painted. The stripes down the middle of the streets need to be painted. We have a serious traffic issue with the overwhelming numbers of tourists who are here, who roll through stop signs. We had a pedestrian death this year. We don't have stop signs where we need them. So when I talk about the next 12 months, that's what I'm looking at in terms of public infrastructure. It's a combination of health and safety and just cleanliness and beautification, which is mentioned by a number of the advisory groups. And I fully support that. That is my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton?
I know, I just fixed it. Okay. I want to kind of echo Councilmember Addis and Councilmember Heller on the cleanliness part of it. I think we're all noticing that, the birds in particular. And I was certainly glad to get the email from Christine today about the group that is working together on that. Also, the safety in downtown, I often, I volunteer with Morro Bay and Bloom. And so that puts me often standing at the corner of Napa and Morro Bay Boulevard. And yes, there are a lot of people who roll through that stop sign. And considering the numbers of visitors we have, who may or may not be looking for a car to do exactly that, it can be kind of challenging to keep everybody safe. And I agree with the better painted crosswalks, perhaps the larger, more visible stop signs, that sort of thing. So the safety issues are definitely in need of attention. And then for maintenance of infrastructure, I'm thinking of the harbor also as an area much in need of attention. So those are the ones I wanted to highlight.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Can you comment more just the maintenance in the harbor area, just so I can get an example of that?
It is a topic that comes up often, that the harbor, parts of the harbor are quite old and are needing attention, the underpinnings, the pilings, that sort of thing is what I was referring to.
Thank you. Thank you. I've noted it. Okay, Councilmember Ford.
All right. Well, the benefit of going last on this topic, well, almost last, Mayor Herring hasn't gone yet, is that I really, that I want to echo what all three council members have said so far. I'm in agreement 100% with everything. And I would say, you know, that could be worked on immediately. I think all of these issues are immediate issues that could be addressed. If I'm thinking long-term infrastructure, I don't know if we're addressing short-term and long-term on this specific goal. But if we're going to go long-term, I know that broadband, things like that, I know that we haven't been able to really address that so far. When I was looking through all of the goals that have been met, or have, are on their way to being met, or haven't been met yet, that that one was, you know, that really hasn't been met. And looking, you know, forward in the future for bringing business into our city and developing our business, you know, enticing businesses to come here so we could be more economically sustainable, I think that that is important. So is it immediate? Not necessarily. But since I already agree with everything else that was already said, that's something I think that would be great to focus in the long term.
Great. Fantastic. I did highlight, I put that, bringing in broadband as a potential long-term action. So it is highlighted on there. And some of these, we may want to acknowledge or put into specificity of timing. I heard, Councilmember Heller, I did note the safety piece being a primary concern, and earlier rather than later. All right, was that it, Councilmember Ford, on this one?
That is all. Thank you so much, Summer. I appreciate your guidance. And, you know, it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience so far. So thank you so much. And thank you to the city for all of your hard work.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Herring.
So I get to make the comment, going last is, makes it easier. So Councilmember Ford, thank you for making my statement, now that I'm going last. Ditto across the board. Thank you, council members, for hitting the nail on the head. I had a couple of additional items, perhaps, in the short term to look at. And I think I heard circulation. I just want to clarify that. But for me, circulation issues fit here. And if I didn't hear it, I just wanted to make sure that that was captured. I heard about, you know, tourism impacts. I heard about, you know, tourism impacts and being able to get out of the city in a timely fashion, but there are a number of other circulation issues I think that need to be looked at and addressed. I also had stormwater management, and I'm not talking about fixing all of our storm drains right now, but in terms of that infrastructure, there is no capital plan for that and no funding mechanism. So I don't know what other category to put it under, but I do think we need to begin to address a plan there, specifically with regard to what Councilmember Barton was talking about on the harbor. And it may come up under financial sustainability, economic vitality, but we need a major capital plan for capital improvement on public spaces along the harbor itself. Sidewalks are a public safety issue. Circulation on the Embarcadero is a major public safety issue, in my opinion. And also, addressing those issues via a direct funding plan, I think is extremely important. I'll add to that, the harbor walk and completing that public space and getting that going and continuing to make that something that's attractive. And lastly, I will add parks. We haven't really looked at our parks in the city for a long time. I'm thinking of Franklin Riley Park specifically, that we're about to unveil, but I do also think that it would be good to begin to look at how we might be able to improve these public spaces for our community members. So I think it'd be good to look at that. And those are just my additions to all the great other comments that were made. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'm going to, any other comments from any of the councilmembers around public infrastructure? Elements you'd like to see the city really addressing over the course of the next 14-plus months? Okay, then I'm going to share my screen on this, just so you can read this as we go, while it's fresh in your mind, to make sure I've captured the items. Certainly, these can be, some of these can be clumped together and may get reordered by staff to reprioritize. But having a plan and address upcoming capital needs, specifically harbor capital plan, to continue to address water security, traffic circulation, specifically in the Embarcadero, a clean city, to address the cleanliness and sanitation issues that's also sensitive to the ecosystem, animals, et cetera. Safety, specifically the Embarcadero and Morro Bay Boulevard, crosswalks, stripes, painted stop signs, and that that really be a focus over the next 12 months. Maintenance in the harbor area, underpinnings and pilings, that's an example that that might, you know, come up here connected in some way. And then stormwater management, that we really need to, not that that needs to be addressed immediately, but a creation of a capital plan or funding mechanism to prepare that plan, to complete the harbor walk, public space, and then to look at parks and how to improve those public spaces for the community. And then here I put, Councilmember Ford, the bringing in broadband, and that it seems that there may be a connection into kind of business development, economic vitality, potentially there as well. Any edits or corrections you would make to any of these? Okay. City Manager Collins, certainly if there's anything in here that you'd want to clarify for staff or ask for clarification on, please chime in as we go. All right, so let's move on to area number two, around what I've termed fiscal sustainability and economic vitality. Certainly, that is up for discussion, if you prefer a different term, but it seemed to encompass many of the different elements I was hearing in this area. And I would just, to get it started, would say that a lot of what I was hearing is, hey, we fared pretty well coming out of the pandemic. The city has done a lot in the last several years to really create good infrastructure, to have good processes for how we really address our budget, look at the budget, kind of fiscal responsibility elements of it, and that this really is a shift on how do we, as a city, make sure we are positioning ourselves in the long term to make sure it's economically vital, that it feel it's oriented towards the future, whether that's with businesses feeling welcome, tourism continuing in a sustainable way, potentially other opportunities. Those are my terms, encompassing much of what I've heard. So let's hear from you on what you would say is really the focus within this goal thing. Mayor Heding, kick us off.
Thanks. Have a number of things that may fit here, but also cross over into other areas. The first of which is really addressing and understanding our citywide CalPERS liability and developing a robust revenue plan for funding that. We've talked about it significantly, and through no fault of staff, because of other priority issues, we haven't been able to really get a handle on that, and I just think we're headed for a big surprise in the near future. And if we don't get a handle on this quickly, I think that could be problematic, so I'll leave that there. Along with that, the other major, to me, cost issue that will cause issues with sustainability financially has to do with our healthcare liability. And that, this year, was rather significant, so I also think, included with CalPERS, that those would be the two major areas I would look at from the expense side, to really get a handle on and understand how we're going to better control the rise in premiums and the cost to the organization or the city, which was tremendous this year. The third would be what I would just categorize as expeditiously completing opportunity or catalyst site development. And, you know, there are a number of things, I tried to make that broad, but there are a number of things that could fit into that, like the completion of Market Place Plaza as a project. A number of properties are being redeveloped on the Embarcadero, the completion of the Cloisters Development Project, the redevelopment of the Bank of America site, so forth and so on. I just think I'd categorize it as completing or moving along the catalyst opportunity projects to realize those as quickly as possible. Additionally, with regard to this, we must address Vistra and master planning for that. I'm going to just leave it very broad, and that would be to work with Vistra to understand the current proposed battery project, but also the remainder master plan development plan, and what that could entail for the city from an economic standpoint. I think that will obviously be very significant for the city in the future. I would be remiss if I didn't put just down the term offshore wind, but that's long-term. And so you could put it down in that long, long-term, like broadband, perhaps, category, but I think we have to keep that in front of us as a major opportunity for economic vitality and diversification. One that may sound odd, but I do believe that the city needs to be involved in assisting businesses, hoteliers, maybe more specifically, but also retail, in improving their facade and infrastructure through an infrastructure assistance program. That may be long-term. Potentially, just as an example, that could be a TOT relief program that allows a hotelier to improve their property, and there is a shared opportunity for the city to assist them with that by forgiving TOT, partially, not fully, for a period of time. But we've got a large number of properties that have been unimproved for a long period of time, both on the retail and hotelier side. And so just trying to understand what type of program of assistance could be developed, I think, could be very helpful to the city and also to further private development. And I'll stop there. I have a number of other things, but I'm going to listen to other folks, so thanks.
Thank you. We can circle back to...
You bet. That's okay.
All right, Councilmember Addis.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for kicking us off. I absolutely am in agreement with everything that was stated, and I would just add a couple things. For me, addressing PERS and healthcare cannot come at the cost of lower wages to employees. So economic vitality would mean that we can do both, that we can pay a competitive wage while also addressing PERS and healthcare. And I say this because we've had retention issues in areas that our public has said are important to them, such as safety services, such as keeping our city clean. All of that takes staffing, and it takes competitive wages. And so if we want to keep listening to our community, we're going to have to address PERS, healthcare, and wages, all as one piece of economic vitality. I would add that if we were economically vital, we would fully fund our harbor needs, and we wouldn't struggle with things that Councilmember Heller brought up, such as painting crosswalks or putting in stop signs. We would be able to do important safety and infrastructure things immediately, as well as in the long term. And it also means being very strategic about increasing revenue through battery storage, through wind, looking at parking, looking at opportunity sites, looking at Market Street Plaza, but staying creative about other ways that we can look at revenue generation. And really continuing to partner with our chamber and other community partners on how do we do those things. Because as you mentioned, city government doesn't have to do it all. We are one partner in this piece of the puzzle, and so I just want to keep appreciating that statement. I would say, I think that's all of my...
Great. I'm going to take just a quick pause to make sure I've captured it before I call in the next person. Great, I think I got it. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Other councilmembers, is there anything you'd like to add on this topic of fiscal sustainability and economic vitality? All right, Councilmember Ford.
I'm in agreement with the mayor and councilmember Addis just mentioned. I would like to add that there's, you know, as far as revenue generation, as I believe Councilmember Addis just, you know, talked about, how we aren't always necessarily the center of how that can happen. And so maybe it's a, you know, becoming creative and reaching out to our community to come up with ideas for revenue generation. Because I think that our city, our city government feels responsible for coming up with all the big ideas, and I think that that's important. We have a smart crew here, so of course that's possible. But I think it's important to be very specific on that topic, to invoke, you know, to invite ideas from our community to participate in that sort of a, on that topic specifically. So I think engaging our community is really important when it comes to generating revenue and coming up with these types of ideas. Also, I want to point out another property, too, to keep in mind, you know, this is more long-term, is the current Worf, the current wastewater treatment plant. Eventually, that will be vacant, and what does that look like, right? So I think the long-term goal for that would be, we have this waterfront property that's amazing, you know, well, almost waterfront, but there's some dunes in the middle there. But anyway, this beachfront property, it's amazing, so what does that look like? What could go there? What could bring in some, you know, additional revenue to our city? So I just wanted to throw that out there, but I don't really have anything else to add to this specifically. I think that we can tie in the long-term goal of broadband, obviously, you know, as you mentioned, Summer, to this topic as well, because I think that it is necessary in the future to be in the competitive market with new businesses coming in. A lot of other cities are, you know, are equipping themselves with this, and so we are a small city, however, we are, we're go-getters, and we're on the forefront of a lot of things, and I think that we could definitely keep that in mind for the future. So that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
Yes, thank you, Summer. I'd like to support what Mayor Heding said with respect to CalPERS liability and healthcare liability, sorts of things that tend to not always get discussed, but it is kind of the elephant in the room, and I appreciate you bringing those up. In terms of fiscal sustainability, a lot of it has to do with infrastructure. I wasn't quite sure whether to put them under the infrastructure column or fiscal sustainability, but I'm very concerned about our financial capacity to finish the water reclamation facility project within a reasonable budget, which I'd say the budget right now is $145 million. I am concerned about how we're going to fund the decommissioning and demolition of the existing sewer plant, and I'm very concerned about how we're going to resolve our legal differences with the Cayuga Sanitary District, which is a part owner in the existing plant. Those things concern me. I consider those near-term issues primarily, but those concern me greatly. Longer term, as mentioned before, the harbor department, I believe, needs a sustainable funding source in order to bring it up to the same level as our other emergency service groups, fire department and police department, which have been supported quite a bit by the passing of Measure E. The harbor department is still hanging out there. They have great operational, financial operational needs, as well as capital improvement needs. We need to identify a sustainable source long-term for them so that they will be able to survive. Lastly, I think we need to, this is also long-term, we need to identify long-term infrastructure funding, federal or state money, to repair our streets, which are in a state of continual decline, and to implement the One Water Project, which is a combination of sewer and water and stormwater piping, which has been identified throughout the city that needs repair or replacement. We're in a state where we have sewer pipes that are leaking into the ground, stormwater that is unnecessarily getting into the bay, and it's my hope that federal or state funding will be available to handle these capital projects, which have been estimated in the $25 to $30 million range, I believe. That $30 million range is for streets, and then another $30 million for the One Water Project. So I think we're very fortunate to have gotten relief funds from the federal government to replenish our general fund emergency reserves, extremely fortunate, or we might not even be having this meeting. And I think that over the last five years, we've made major improvements in the managing of our finances, and we're on a very good track to continue those with the staff and the programs and policies that we have in place. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton?
Well, I think that everyone has made wonderful contributions to this topic. There's so many ways to look at it. The one thing I thought that may be fit here, I know you're going to deal with housing on it, I think it's its own standalone issue, but I think it also kind of fits into this same category, in the sense of having housing for people who want to work here. And so I just want to toss that one out, too.
Great. All right. Was that it, Councilmember Barton?
Yes, I agree with all the other, the other things that were said.
Okay, thank you. Any other items that you'd like to highlight on the goal area of fiscal sustainability and economic vitality? Mayor Heding.
I think it's probably worth adding, because it may be longer term, but it's related to my general comment about the development of the Vistra site, and that is, I do believe that the city needs to evaluate an EIFD or Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. We could extract revenues from taxes on the Vistra property from the county. That could be mutually beneficial. And so we've talked a little bit about it before, but I'll leave it at explore an EIFD with regard to the Vistra development. with regard to the Vistra development.
Okay. Any final comments on this goal area? Okay, then I'm going to share this one, this one's a little bit longer, and I apologize if I, I'm trying to type and listen at the same time, so if I have spelled anything wrong, please correct it, or in the final document certainly, city staff will certainly correct this.
Summer, I'm glad you get to do this. It's nice to be able to participate.
You know what's nice about it? When you're not doing this on a paper chart, Word tells you if you're spelling something wrong, so that's kind of nice. But, so the first couple here, to address citywide Calpers liability and robust funding plan, and I put an asterisk here, and on the next one around, address healthcare liability, the rise in premiums and cost to the city. And the asterisk is here to identify what Councilmember Addus had highlighted, that those need to be addressed while balancing fair wages for staff to accomplish all of these amazing goals that we're discussing, and to continue to do the awesome work that the staff does. Third, we had to expeditiously complete the Catalas site development, and I listed some of the areas that were identified in that. Next was to address Vistra, the current proposed battery project and master planning. And we had to assist businesses, hotels, retail, to improve the sod and infrastructure, and there was mention of maybe a partial TOT relief program, but that really was more of a long-term effort, potentially. Onto the next page, we have the fund the harbor needs fully, and really looking to identify a sustainable funding source for those needs, being strategic and increasing revenue funding or revenue generation, and a comment here about getting creative and reaching out to community for some of those ideas, opportunities that might exist. To partner with community members and organizations to accomplish these goals, I think that likely just goes across everything, but was important to note for staff. Thinking through what we do with the current WRF property, since it'll be vacant, and what we can do with that land. Finishing the current build on the WRF project within a reasonable budget, and then funding the decommission, the current plant. Fund settlement with Cayugas, I don't know if that's exactly how we'd want to highlight that, so please hop in if you have a different way you'd like to identify that one. Consider housing for people that want to work here, and I think you're right. Councilmember Barton, that will probably talk more about that in this next goal area as well. And then to explore EIFD in regard to the Vistra development. We did have a few identified as long-term, potential long-term action items, to explore the offshore wind opportunity. I also put the broadband piece in this part as well, that Councilmember Ford had brought up, to identify long-term infrastructure funding for streets, and then the implementation of the One Water Project. Any corrections from the councilmembers? And then it looks like Sarah Johnson-Rios has her hand up. Let's first see, are there any corrections from any of the councilmembers on what's written here? Okay, Sarah, you had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I just had a clarifying question on B. The way I heard the mayor describe it, I was wondering if B was to include the OPEB unfunded liability in addition to the premium healthcare costs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sarah, help me, how do I identify that, OPEB?
O-P-E-B, it's an acronym, Other Post Employment Benefits.
I was going to go for that, that was my guess, but I wanted to get it right. Thank you.
And the unfunded liability piece of that.
Thank you, Sarah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great, I have it on letter B. Excellent, thank you for clarifying that, Sarah. Okay, so we'll move into the housing goal theme. This one, as Councilmember Barton started to speak about in this last area, some of what I heard from some of the community input, as well as the one-on-ones, was concern around how do we ensure that the city of Morro Bay is, has housing available for people that want to live here, but as well as people that work in Morro Bay and may want to live here, but have to commute in to serve in the city in some way. So that was some of what I heard, opportunities to be creative about how that can be done, and other housing needs can be addressed. Those were some of the things that I heard. Certainly, this has been a goal area you all have been, had some focus on already, so I'd love to open it up and hear what you all would like to see as the focus at this point in time for Morro Bay. Would like to start. All right, Councilmember Heller.
I will start. As you know, this has shown up from just about everybody, affordable workforce housing. I don't think we can wait for developers to come in and do this, because it's not truly affordable when developers do it, but I think we should consider the option of the city becoming a landlord. We own a fair amount of property in the city. I think there's some opportunities here with recent legislation from Sacramento that will allow us to build fairly high-dense units with perhaps reduced parking requirements. If we can identify funding for this, we can own and operate housing for local employees long-term at cost or with a minimal profit, and I think we need to look at that very closely. We have the land, let's do something positive with it. Let's do what we need, which is affordable housing. Could be funding that we procure, or it could be a public-private partnership, but I think we should pursue that. To me, that's a short-term goal, let's get after it.
Great, thank you. Who would like to speak on this next? Councilmember Addus.
Well, I want to compliment our council, because before about, gosh, 2019 or so, we didn't talk about housing at all, and it was considered somebody else's problem. And then our last round of goals, we added affordable housing, and we did vote for our portion of a potential project on Atascadero Road, I believe it is. And so I think we've taken some baby steps, but I want to agree with Councilmember Heller around the urgency of this issue, and want to mention SB 9 that Councilmember Heller brought up yesterday evening, and that if Morro Bay is not going to have reasonable solutions to this issue, the state has legislation that has been signed that are going to be imposed on Morro Bay, one way or the other. And so we have to wrap our arms around this to bring us into the future. The chamber has brought it up as housing being good for business, and I absolutely agree with that. What I would like to see, if this was my absolute success, it would be mixed-use projects around our downtown core, around our waterfront, and possibly reuse of the Vistra property or even the old sewer plant, wherever we can find those opportunities for mixed use that create both affordable housing for the very, very low income, but also accessible housing for what people are calling the missing metal. We have to have not just lowest-wage workforce housing, but also middle-wage income earners, first-time homebuyers, the next generation. We need a mix of projects, but I do want to agree on the urgency of this situation.
Thank you, Councilmember Addus. Additional thoughts around the housing goal theme, what you'd like to see staff really focus attention on? This is obviously one of those that it's not a problem that only the city organization can solve, it requires more layers. So focus for the city staff on this area. Mayor Heading.
Thank you. There are a number of expert organizations, such as People's Self-Help Housing, et cetera, that really do a good job with regard to this, and I think we should explore the opportunity for partnerships. Councilmember Heller talked about, you know, quote-unquote, "city-owned and/or city-generated" projects, but these require special expertise, and so I would try to forge relationships or increase the relationships that exist and potentially could exist in the future with organizations like that. And then we have actually a list of opportunity properties for this type of development, and I guess I would just suggest that it be moved to the forefront, and we really strategically evaluate the potential use. One of the examples would be a property to the south of us, close to our wastewater treatment facility, not any property that we own, but right next door, there are approximately 50 or so acres of potential development, and these are sites that, again, I think need to be explored, and potentially the city can offer incentives. And that's the third thing that I wanted to bring up, incentives for projects that bring affordable housing to the community. So an evaluation of our incentive packages, maybe potentially through impact fee reduction or other kinds of incentives that would assist in making these projects happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. I think I have that captured. All right, any other comments around the housing goal theme? Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm in support of, you know, exploring these opportunities that have been mentioned before me, and that, you know, speaking with various department heads in our own, within our own city, and many of which, you know, expressed the fact that our staff members, you know, a lot of them can't afford to live here, as well as, you know, as has been discussed, many of the people that work here cannot afford to live here, so they're having to commute here, it's just not, it's just something that weighs on my mind, and I, I'm glad that we are, you know, choosing to make this one of our continued focuses. And I know, working with our city planning department, I know that they're working really hard to implement some things that will help make this process go that much faster. I know that it's on their minds as well, and they're working hard, our city staff is amazing. So I have full confidence that if we continue to have this as one of our goals, that we can, working with other organizations, I think that we can really make some major improvements quickly as short-term goals. So, yeah, I really just want to show a support. I don't really have any additional ideas necessarily.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments about the housing goal area? All right, I will share my screen then to show you what I've captured here, and please, if anybody wants to clarify either what I've written or any clarifying questions from staff. So under this area...
Excuse me, yes, this is Jeff. Is there someone who could enlarge that screen? What I'm seeing is pretty small font.
Is it?
Maybe you can. Yeah, that would be helpful.
Is that better?
Oh, that's so much better, thank you.
Good, good, good. I'm sorry, you've been suffering in silence there. Good. Okay. So, A, we have, and these are very interconnected, clearly, but first was to work to address affordable workforce housing, consider the city becoming a landlord, as the city owns a fair amount of property, to potentially own and operate housing with the land we have, with funding we procure, or through a public-private partnership. I just highlighted some additional comments that were made about housing is good for business, looking at mixed use and/or developing other properties. The exploring opportunity for partnerships to address housing, one of the groups being People's Self-Help Housing, as this requires expertise to do this kind of work. Really to move to the forefront, a review of the list of properties for this type of development, to explore what could be used for this purpose, and to look to create incentives to bring affordable housing into Morro Bay. One of the examples given was an impact fee reduction. And then finally, I did highlight this, Councilmember Ford, that you had, that you had stated was to really to continue the work that the planning department is doing to expedite the process, so the things that are in play that do support the other infrastructure of making this happen. Anything you feel that I missed, or you'd want to clarify in what I've captured? Okay.
Just one, I'm sorry, just, just from our discussion last night, this is not necessarily a large goal issue, but we did talk about, you know, some of the new housing bills that the governor is signing, and educating council with regard to those requirements and mandates. So I would just love to see, you know, council member education as policymakers, we need to understand it before we can set policies, so that would be very helpful on new legislation recently passed. Excuse me.
That's great. I went ahead and added that as F, educate council in regards to state mandates slash new legislation. Does that capture it?
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the final goal area that I pulled out, as there being quite a lot of alignment on, is climate action, and certainly, once we cover, as we have been with each of the goals, once we go through climate action in the same way, we'll open it up if there's other things you feel like have not been captured in one of these four that you'd like to add. Specific to climate action, I think there were some fantastic things written in the, or provided for, by the public in the reports that was provided before this meeting, and some things that were identified in the survey and whatnot. Certainly, climate action is an area that many cities are taking a focus on, and is obviously one of those areas that cannot be resolved solely by the city, but what are potentially, what I heard, both from that community input and in one-on-ones with each of you, what can, as a city, what can you do to begin to take steps to address climate action? And so this being something that you wanted to get on the radar and start taking steps in that direction, knowing this is not, in the 14 months that these goals are intended to be covering, that's not going to resolve in 14 months, but that you start taking steps for this longer term. So I will open it up for whichever councilmember would like to start the conversation. Councilmember Addus.
I'll go, but I want to, if somebody else wanted to go first and just didn't get there quick enough, I concede my position.
You're on the hot seat now.
Okay, I'll take it. So for me, climate action is also linked to preserving open space, and I want to echo what Mayor Heading said about parks, which I consider a type of open space, and planning commissions, recommendations around trees. The reason I bring this up is, and I did a tiny bit of research, according to the Institute for Local Government, forest, parks, and open-space lands serve as carbon sinks that can store greenhouse gas emissions and would otherwise contribute, that would otherwise contribute to climate change. Trees and plants within parklands and open spaces remove carbon pollution from the air we breathe. So for me, a piece of this is continuing the work on the Toro Creek Preserve. It's moving our tree plan forward. It is investing in our parks, but it's also some longer-term things, like battery storage. As Diablo goes offline, California is going to have a huge deficit in terms of energy production and clean energy production. It's things like continuing work on our wind farm, and it's also, or the potential wind farm, it's not ours yet, but it's a potential. And then it's participating with other cities in our county in updating our climate action plan. And I'll reiterate what Councilmember Heller brought up last night, which was, we'd love to have a review of the current climate action plan, and then better understand what can happen for the future. So it's that very nitty-gritty work of what's in that plan and how will it be updated.
Councilmember Addus, before we move on, I just want to make sure I captured this correctly. The, can you say more about what you meant in the battery storage piece?
Yes, so I see battery storage as connected with climate action because it... Yes, so I see battery storage as connected with climate action because it will allow us to pull energy that already exists from wind, from solar, and from other sources off the grid, store it for up to four hours, feed it back into the grid, and in doing so can reduce our reliance on carbon-producing energy sources.
Thank you. Thank you. That's perfect. Okay. Councilmember Heller.
Summer, I got to tell you, I'm amazed at how you can type and listen and do all this. That's an amazing skill.
I'll be tired by the end of the night.
I bet, I bet you will be. Oh, gosh. I agree with Councilmember Addis's comments, and I'd like to hearken back to the mayor's comments about SB 9 and educating the council as to what the impacts of that legislation is. I would like to approach climate change in the same way that we, that staff come back and educate the council as best they can. There are a number of technical terms, which has taken me a long time to read and learn about, and I understand about half of them. And I think in order for us to make intelligent decisions, we need to have kind of a baseline of, of knowledge about it. So I see that as kind of a, a longer-term goal, but something that we probably could wedge in somewhere in the next 12 to 14 months. I have a very specific action in thinking about this. There is some legislation with respect to diverting organic waste from the landfill, which I'm heavily involved in. There's a county board which is supposed to be monitoring this program. I believe that the city of Morro Bay could show a leadership role and put together, using your new partnership wheel, which I love, put together a group of volunteers, maybe community emergency response team, other people who are concerned about landfills and greenhouse gas emissions, to go door-to-door to see, in fact, if people understand this legislation, because it's really asking people in their kitchens to change their behaviors with what they would do with their food waste. And I think we can probably get a lot done with the restaurants and the large grocery stores with respect to this legislation. But the bottom line is, it's almost a door-to-door approach, I think, for it to be effective. And I think that's one thing we can do in the next 12 to 14 months to really make this legislation meaningful. That is it.
Thank you. I really appreciate, I just have to highlight this because I don't always hear this from councils, what you just said, Councilmember Heller, about educating council on the technical terms related to this, and then also around, you know, looking for expertise. I really applaud that, that you all, we can't all be experts in everything, and yet you're asked to sit there and make decisions about policy. So I really appreciate acknowledging that you need to lean on other experts for that to happen. So thank you for that comment. Mayor Heading.
Yes, thank you. Concurrent with what has been stated, thanks for that. I specifically want to underline what Councilmember Addis said. I do believe the lithium-ion battery project and the potential offshore wind project, even though they're long-term, belong under this category as well, maybe potentially others too, but I just want to echo that. I want to just add also that we're conscious of the need for advocacy as a council for regional policies that specifically are being considered by the Air Pollution Control District of the county and all counties, and CARB, the California Air Reduction Board, or Air Quality Board, I should say, and that we are advocating for those policies that are coming down and being promulgated through those organizations and that we're paying attention to it, like our involvement in the Pomodones Wind Area Reduction of Particulate Matter Contamination, et cetera. And offshore riding and vehicle use, which will decrease emissions. And I think just being cognizant and aware of what those agencies are involved in, what policies they're considering, and how they apply locally is important, and that we advocate for those items that will improve or reduce emissions, et cetera. I also think we need to evaluate our city policies with regard to like purchases and other things, to make sure that we're, we're looking at the environment with regard to vehicle purchase and emissions and other kinds of things. One example is recently, you know, some of the items associated with wastewater treatment facility and the opportunities there. That's just an example, but I just think we should take the opportunity to look locally at our policies that the city might be able to consider to assist with climate change. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Other com, oh, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I want to go back, take it back to the, the subject that Councilmember Addis brought up about the tree banking system. The, before I was on council, I was a planning commissioner, and the idea of tree banking came to us out of a, out of a meeting that we had with arborists, various arborists from our area that were concerned, you know, the concern is that we may not have the proper trees in the right areas, the right spaces that can thrive in where they are currently, you know, planted. And it's why we have an issue with, you know, some of our trees are stunted and all these things. And so I think that it's important that, with this theme of climate action, that we, when we consider planting trees in our commercial areas and even private residences, I think it's great for our city, especially since our city is a Tree City USA, that we, we really do take into consideration the fact that we need to be pointing people in the right direction for the, the right trees to put in the right zones in Morro Bay. And it's my understanding there's like five different zones like that in Morro Bay for climate. And so putting the correct trees in the right spaces is really important. So something like that for the city is a really, that's a really short-term goal that we could implement. That could be just a small step in the right direction when it comes to climate. So that's something I just kind of wanted to, you know, add a little bit to there. Of course, you know, green energy, all those types of things are really important, but I think it's also important for us to, I know we voted on this in a past meeting, I think it was the 14th, my very first meeting, and we were talking about, you know, this writing on behalf of our, our city to, you know, state, federal levels, whatnot, on behalf of certain issues. And I think being cognizant of climate issues and things like that, staying, staying aware of what's happening, keeping aware of what's happening on a federal level, but also being active in what's happening on a federal level and on a state level as a small city, I think is really important for us. So what does that look like? I don't know. But I just think that we can be active in that space. So, that's, that's it.
Summer, I just wanted to add that Councilmember Ford said it much better than I did, but that's what I was referring to when I said advocacy, both at the local, regional, and national level. I concur with that, and I just want to echo the importance of that and the impact that local jurisdictions can have, both regionally and federally. But if they say nothing, there's no impact. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to move that up to connect those, those comments together. I think that's great. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Other comments from the council related to climate action? Or action you'd like to provide to the city staff?
I would like to agree with the list that's been generated, but perhaps add a few more things to it. And one, one in particular is we've, we've talked about the battery storage and wind. Solar is not mentioned here, and so I think that's, that's one that perhaps should be on there. And also, climate action includes water conservation, so which, you know, kind of ties into Jen's trees, as she was explaining them, different, different trees can get by on less water than other trees, and so that's, that's an area. Otherwise, I think this is a good list.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen then on this one. And as we've been doing, please highlight if there's anything that I've missed or you want to clarify. First, we had the preserve, open space, and some of the items that were talked about here was invest in parks, planning commissions' recommendations on tree banking, there's a bit more on that later, continue work on the Toro Creek Preserve. Did I get that one right? Excellent.
T-O-R-O.
It's just one R?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leverage battery storage, reduce reliance on carbon-producing energy sources, to continue to work on a potential offshore wind farm. Participate with other cities in the Slow County to update the climate action plan, reviewing that current plan and understand what can be updated. To educate council on the technical terms around climate action, to help make informed decisions. To divert organic waste from the landfill, that specifically that the city of Morro Bay could take the lead on this county effort and some of the door-to-door efforts with residents to actually change behaviors there. To be conscious of the council's ability to advocate on policymaking at the county level, as through Air Pollution Control District, the state and federal, and how those policies can be applied locally, or will be applied locally. To evaluate the internal city policies regarding purchases that are climate-conscious, such as fleet purchases, educating the community on planting the right trees in the right places, looking for opportunities for solar, and then to support additional water conservation efforts. Councilmember Addis, yes?
I want to also tie this back to our other goals when it comes to infrastructure as well as housing. When we talk about multi, multi-use housing projects, it cuts down on commuting, which I think is, we all know, helps the climate. But also, when we talk about traffic circulation and the ease of getting in and out of the Embarcadero or getting to where people need to be, it cuts down on them idling. And one thing I don't know if I saw in there was an additional focus or more support for high-capacity EV chargers for cars, and making sure that, you know, doing work towards bringing more of those. We had talk at past council meetings around the fact that there's so few on the central coast, and some people have brought up the idea that Morro Bay could be a tourism draw for people who need fast charging, because we're about halfway between San Francisco and LA.
Great, thank you. I did add in, Councilmember Addis, to, to note, to connect to other goals, reducing travel or commute with more housing in Morro Bay, and to ease, the ease to get out of the Embarcadero or traffic circulation cuts down on emissions, and then access to EV chargers for cars. Does that capture it? City Manager Collins.
Yes, thank you, Summer. Really good discussion. And I, I know you may have more questions after this, but I wanted to check in and see how we would want to prioritize that list. They're all wonderful ideas. Many of them are in the 12 to 14-month range, and you see the department heads before you who would be, you know, were the ones to be called upon to execute, and there's this many people to do the job. So we just want to know how we want to prioritize that, that list and, you know, sort of the steps to do that.
Thank you. That is exactly where I was going to just go, actually, before we go there. Councilmember Addis, did you have a comment about that?
Well, I was just going to respond and say I'd like to hear from staff on where many, you know, I think Councilmember Heller brought up understanding the climate action plan, but I don't know if the city manager is asking about every goal or just this goal in particular, but I'd like to hear from staff as this comes back about, you know, what's possible immediately, what's possible medium-range, what needs to remain long-term, and what is already in the works. Because it's my belief that many of the things that we brought up today are already part of those, many, many dozens of things staff is already working on.
Yeah, it falls along the spectrum of nothing had been done and many things being done on, on that. And that's a, my comment was specific to, or general to the whole conversation of those four goals and the buckets that have been created. I, again, my, my goal is to make sure we can execute, and if we, when I started here, we had 87 objectives. Council narrowed that down to about 30, and we probably leveled that down to about, you know, 20. So, you know, in four, three or four years. So just, I want to make sure we're able to, to level set on reasonable expectations because I want council to be successful. So that's, that's where that comment came from. But yeah, I, I agree, Councilmember Addis, that some of these things are, already have progress being made and others are, are new, kind of new ideas.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Collins. I think probably most of your staff members have left the building after seeing this list. I've got to say, though, when I got this list showing what you have accomplished, I never cease to be amazed at how much you and your staff have gotten done for this city since you've been here. And it's just, it's amazing. I mean, I'm just so impressed with it all. I think that we are primed right now to really embrace this new partnership wheel, frankly. I think there are components of how we operate now that, that are focused on the topic. I think, I think we can do even more with that. I think we can lighten the load on your staff even more. There are eager people on these advisory committees who want to take on more responsibility. They call me and say, why can't I do this? Why can't I do that? So I think it might be good for the council to look at the policy for advisory committees and general work with staff to figure out how far we can go with this new partnership wheel, because we have a remarkable community with enormous volunteer energy and concern for the city, and we put a lot of it to work. I think there's more potential there. So I don't want you to feel like it's all on you. I understand you have to look at it in that way, but maybe we can look at it in a different way this time.
Right.
Go ahead, Mayor Heading.
Well, we just, I, I'm so used to controlling meetings, I'm sorry, I forgot to raise my hand. I apologize.
You're going.
But what I wanted to say is, is just echo, thanks for the comments, Councilmember Addis and Heller. You know, Scott, it'd be, I think, our expectation that, just like we've done in past seasons, that your, your people would take these and say, hey, this is long-term, we have this much capability and capacity, we can probably do this fairly easily, this is going to be a hard one and may require additional resources, and, and just help us understand what I call organizational capacity and the ability to achieve the goals. And I trust you and your, your leadership staff and your staff in general to, you know, massage this, come back and, and say, hey, this is just not doable, or these are the things that we think we can accomplish, and I trust your judgment with regard to that, and, and we'll look forward to that. So. That makes sense.
I would definitely recommend, and if City Manager Collins, this meets what you need to support the execution with the staff, sometimes what we do is, at this point, why we call a recess, and we, or Mayor Heading would call it recess, and I would put these into a spreadsheet and give, give points for the council to allocate and prioritize. In this situation, I'm happy to do that, if we'd like to do that. In this situation, I would discourage that, and, and here's why. I think that the way that this council has articulated, and I tried to capture by having a verb at the beginning of each of these items, that many of the things that are listed here are consider, explore, educate, it's, it's not directive in the sense that, that there has to be a completion of, it's a, it's an exploration of what are the right elements and, and how, what's short-term, what's long-term. And so I think it could be a mistake if we were to prioritize this evening based upon this list. You might end up, just on that math that happens, you might end up with the, with not the best work of what the work actually should be. And frankly, it does not take into account the expertise of the staff weighing in on how these things could be done or done in conjunction with others. So my recommendation is a facilitator- Um, so my recommendation as a facilitator would be that we would take this list, which by the way, I still want to open up for conversation. I know this is a lot, but if there's anything we missed, I know that's scary to think about, but I do want to make sure we get to that. Um, but once we do that, that it really is an opportunity for staff to take this back and to then finesse, hey, within these areas, here's what we would like to recommend is the, or the top priorities and what can be done in this 14-month timeframe versus these are ones that we're going to take maybe this step towards it, but it's really going to come into the, the next, uh, 2023 year. How does that feel to the, the group here?
It feels good to me. I, I think that's a reasonable approach. I really do. Um, and I, if you're at the, the point for additional comments, you know, I, I almost consider it, um, um, a fifth area, but I, I'm not wanting to add a fifth area. But, but I, I want to talk about organizational effectiveness and capacity. Um, and, and the reason I mention that is, is, um, not generated by the immediate discussion, but I had this written down a long time ago with regard to, um, we're a small city. We have limited resources. Um, um, Councilmember Addis talked about our ability to pay appropriately and attract the right resources, human resources or human capital, which to me, um, is much more important than capital, like buildings and things like that. Um, and I would, um, I would just like Mr. Collins and his leadership to think about what the council might be able to do to, um, assist with, um, not improving because it's not adequate, but, but assisting you with the tools that you need so that you can execute, um, you know. And again, I'm not trying to say all the goals that we've done, but, but Scott, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going to be honest with our, our, as always with our community, you guys work hard. You folks work really, really hard. And I, I am continuously amazed, um, with the quantity and quality of work that is produced by you and your staff, from your staff reports to the information that we request and what comes back so that we can make good decisions. But I also know, uh, that internally, um, at times people can get stressed and stretched and work long hours. And, um, I just, um, want to somehow just raise the issue of, um, not only leadership, but staff health and staff, uh, support and making sure that you have everything you need in your toolkit to be effective. And I, I don't know if I'm being clear with my articulation of that, but, um, I think a lot of times you guys just do it and you work hard. And we never, we never know when, um, you know, you're, you're getting to the end of your rope, so to speak, because you guys don't show it. I mean, you really don't. You're so professional, we don't see it. But I know in, in one-on-one discussions, um, the time commitment and, um, the, um, the caring that we have with our people. And so, um, Scott, you just need to come back after you massage all this stuff and, and, and put it through your screen, knowing that we understand that. And if there's some things that we need to do to assist in making sure that, um, you're healthy and our staff's members, leadership and staff are healthy, you need to let us know.
I, I appreciate that. And I, I think, um, it, it feels the same way. I mean, I know how hard it's been for, for, for being now with Jen. Um, the last two years have been very challenging, uh, with COVID. And you guys have been champions of, of the, the community and, and city and staff as well. And, um, the community has been too. I mean, they approved a tax measure so that, you know, we can continue to provide these services and also begin to pay our employees in a way that, you know, is competitive with our region. So I, I, we definitely feel the, the support. So I appreciate that. And also appreciate the faith that you put in us to sort of take all these great ideas and sort of put them into the buckets and realize that, you know, we can't do them all at once. And I know you all know that. Um, so we don't want it, we don't want any offense taken if we sort of move things around. As long as we're very clear about how, how and when we can execute. And I, I do take to heart what Councilmember Heller said about sort of, it's what we learned at Grasville on networking, you know, network governance is, is how things get done. But it's easier said than done sometimes. It's, it's a leap of faith. But, you know, a lot of times it pans out in the end and it's a better product. So something I definitely take to heart to help get these things done.
Yeah.
We'll just send Councilmember Heller door to door to achieve.
He can talk about organic waste and yeah, add it to his list.
Blam.
I'm sorry, Summer. I didn't want to steal, um, your leadership. Go ahead, please.
No, no, no. I appreciate that. And I didn't hear, Mayor Heading, I didn't hear you saying that that organizational effectiveness is necessarily an ad of a goal theme, really a, um, a reminder to staff to make sure that they raise the flag on what's needed to accomplish these. And I think the permission to highlight, these are all important elements, but that the reality is not all of these things can be done. And, and some of these things can't be done, even if it was the only goal, it couldn't be done in the next 14 months. So I think acknowledging that to say, these are, um, areas of focus. I would say specifically in climate action at this point, if I look at that, we have kind of everything in the kitchen sink in there because it's, that's common because this is new for your city to be putting that as a goal. And so I think putting some attention on some of the areas that are very tangible initial steps to execute on, like revisiting what does the current climate action plan say? Um, where maybe that needs to be updated? Um, educating the council about some of those key areas so that you all can make really good informed decisions and policy around those. I think those are going to be key initial steps to then determine what additional areas really can be priorities in the remaining months. Um, and I'm more than happy to help articulate some of that as I pass this on, Scott, to you and the, and the leadership team, um, to maybe support how that gets, um, initially prioritized based on the conversation this evening. And then you all, certainly I'm not an expert in all of these areas. So then certainly, once you put that expertise on it, that that helps to prioritize it. Councilmember Ford, you had your hand up a few minutes ago. Was there something specific to that? Go ahead.
Not specific to what we're talking about right now. I actually have an additional goal I would like to propose. And so I will wait until we're ready for that, especially after this conversation. And we're already spread thin and here I am wanting to add something to the list. So whenever we're ready for that, just let me know.
So let's actually launch into that. And I do want to just articulate that it is important that we have that conversation so that we make sure we have all the pieces on the table, right? To say, hey, these are really the, the goal focus areas because sometimes something might come up that actually takes a higher priority than what we've had, um, articulated at this point. Um, so I would like to open it up. These, with these four areas we've already talked about around public infrastructure, fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, housing and then climate action, uh, with an undercurrent of making sure we do that, make sure we pay attention to our capacity to actually accomplish these goals. Anything anyone would like to, um, have considered to be added to this? So Councilmember Ford, why don't you kick us off?
All right. Thank you so much. I need to lower my hand. Okay. Um, I would like to propose that we add a fifth goal of diversity, equity and inclusion in our city, um, coined, you know, D E I. Um, and the reason I bring this up is because I, well, I feel as though this particular subject, this, this, this area, um, can be included in other areas as well as climate action, economic vitality, all these things. I think in housing, all of these are a theme that can go under D E I. And the reason I bring up diversity, equity and inclusion is I think that in our current day and time, I think that it is on a lot of people's minds. I think it's on a lot of cities' minds. Um, talking to other cities, it's actually a very common goal in other cities. Um, they've created task force, task forces and things like that in order to address, um, D E I. And, you know, we may be a small town, however, we are never, you know, we, we are not excluded from, um, having discrimination, you know, whether it be racial or, um, you know, religion. However, the description may be, we are not exempt from that. And I think as a city, we need to be actively anti these things. And whether that be in our workforce, within our city, and how we go about on our hiring processes and things of that sort. Um, and also the way that we approach our community. Um, for example, it's always, it's been on my mind that we don't have closed captioning, you know, on our, um, on our broadcast for our meetings, our public meetings. And so, you know, that would be part of inclusion as well. Um, and one more thing I want to add is things like Polco, you know, these types of, um, surveys, I think are reflective of a certain, you know, particular part of our community versus the community as a whole. We have a very diverse community here in Morro Bay that may not have been included in this poll. And I think that, um, you know, there's things that we could do as a city to, um, as far as outreach, to include, uh, different parts of our community in these types of, um, surveys and participation in our, in our government. So, um, overall, I just, it's just, it's weighing on my mind. It's, it's what I do in my life. I'm an activist when it comes to human rights and, um, these sorts of things. And so, you know, I, I, I would feel like I didn't do my job if I didn't bring it up here as a city goal as well because I think that, um, we can definitely implement it in short-term and also in long-term, um, ways. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if anyone else wants to support that, but.
Councilmember Addis?
Uh, I'm super glad that Councilmember Ford, um, brought this up because it's been on my mind, but I didn't think to bring it up in our one-on-ones as an actual goal. Um, but it is something that is top of mind for me. And what's really interesting about this is that Sheriff, Sheriff Ian Parkinson just put out a community report on systemic racism in Slow County. And so I want to be very clear as I talk about this, that this is not, um, finger pointing at staff by any stretch of the imagination. But I do want to read just a couple of sentences from Sheriff Ian Parkinson's report. Um, and before this report came out, the sheriff had said that systemic racism does not exist in Slow County. He then went through quite a bit of education and created a unity committee. And this is what his own committee said. During a discussion about social change, a colleague shared, it takes us all. Indeed, to tackle the deeply embedded systemic racism in our institutions, culture and social structures, we all need to work together toward a common goal of equity. This is both a blessing and a challenge. The blessing is that the people in Slow County are decent and want to do the right thing. And my addition is the people of Morro Bay, um, are decent and want to do the right thing. And indeed, there are many committed individuals and organizations which have continued to make slow, steady progress. Um, yet the challenge remains. And so I just want to put that out there. It's from our own sheriff. And then remind our council that we unanimously voted to declare racism a public health crisis. Um, and I think what Councilmember Ford might be bringing forward is it's now time for us to take action along with that unanimous declaration. And we have had residents come forward and say that they have experienced racism in our city. Uh, we've had community forums on this in the past. And so I want to strongly support this. I don't have a lot of specific actions that staff can take other than to say other cities, local to the central coast, have created unity committees or D E I committees, have looked at implicit bias, but have also looked at how diversity, equity and inclusion are reflected in policies, as Councilmember Ford said, around housing, around services. And what could we do to take small steps, um, towards a more equitable Morro Bay?
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, you're next.
Uh, yes, um, let's see if I can lower my hand. It's a good idea to lower your hand before you start talking. This is interesting. Uh, I feel like I, I can't support it until I am brought up to speed on what our current policies are with respect to hiring, what the state and federal laws are with respect to these issues. Uh, obviously it's an important one. Frankly, I think dealing with COVID, that would, that's my favorite thing that doesn't seem to fit on the list. I think we have some work to do there to try and increase the vaccination rate here in our city. Um, I don't see this as something that's urgent, that the, the D E I is something urgent, needs to be done at this time. And considering the list that we've created, I'd rather see our time spent on increasing the number of people who are fully vaccinated against COVID.
Um, Councilmember Heller, am I understanding correctly that, are you suggesting that, that a potential goal area that is added for the next 12 to 14 months is related to vaccination?
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. And obviously we can all come up with, with good things that are not on the list that we've created. I am concerned about what we put on the staff at this juncture. We have a lot of really important things that, that we've put on them. You know, Scott Collins' face is no longer on the screen, so that's symptomatic of, um, his response. No, just kidding. Uh, but I think, I'm very concerned about COVID and I don't think it's over. And I think that's more pressing. And I'm reluctant to put too much more on, on staff's plate, but I think COVID should be there as opposed to the D E I issue, so.
And just so I make sure I captured this correctly, Councilmember Heller, that the, that the, um, is it a specific action step around COVID vaccination? That the city is part of increasing those vaccinations?
Exactly. I, I would like the city to set a target for the city of Morro Bay to have X percentage of, uh, vac, fully, fully vaccinated, uh, people in the city. Set a target. And again, I'm going door to door. Uh, some city actually paying people a hundred bucks or something to get vaccinated. We could get a thousand people vaccinated for, for, uh, I don't know the math. Anyway. So I think there are a lot of options here and I'm very concerned.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. We're getting into action steps and I always want to avoid that from a council. I, I think that, Jeff, I, I do apologize, but, um, um, moving into specific action steps will, will come. So I think, I think the broad goal, if I'm not incorrect, is, um, increase the vaccination rate in Morro Bay.
Yeah, it's a short, it's a short-term goal.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I just want to make sure I was capturing what the, what the goal theme is. I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Barton, did you have comments about either of these or an additional?
Um, I wanted to thank Jen and Don both for, um, bringing this, uh, subject up. It's, it's one that needs to be addressed and I, I think there's a way to do it in the, um, existing, um, um, sections of, of what we've talked about tonight. And, and as for the, um, COVID, I think COVID is a D E I, um, situation. It's, um, the, the differences in different groups of, um, people, uh, their vaccination rates is, is amazing. And so, um, it's, I, it, it's clearly something that we need to be addressing. Um, so I would support it being a, a fifth area or that it be, um, one that floats in all the other areas. Um, so I, I, I thank you both for bringing it up.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Mayor Heading?
I couldn't find my hand. That's, man, it's hard to be on this side of the thing and not controlling the meeting, I'll tell you. So, um, let me, um, uh, first of all, support the comments by Councilmember Addis and Councilmember Ford. I, I think, um, from the perspective of, this is just my viewpoint of, um, where we live, um, our community, maybe even our county. Um, it, it appears to be a lesser of an issue than more diverse, quote unquote, larger urban areas. But I don't believe that to be true. Um, I believe it to be just as prevalent, um, some of the issues that were specifically mentioned here as in other areas, as an example, the action that we took to declare racism as a public health issue and/or crisis. And what I And what I would offer up is, uh, perhaps the bucket is public health, and, and perhaps, uh, under, or community health, whatever you want to call it, but I like public health, perhaps diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, is part and parcel of that, and begins to get defined, and maybe the shorter-term issue might be greater understanding issue. Um, and, um, a greater understanding, um, and awareness of, um, what these issues are, and then we can further articulate them, um, with regard to specific actions as we begin to understand it. So I'm just, I'm trying to think, as, as Councilmember, um, Barton was talking about, I think it's a thread throughout just about everything, but I do believe public health would encompass it. And I also believe, um, it would encompass what Councilmember Heller was talking about, um, which is COVID-19 and/or vaccination rates. I think that would fit there as well. Um, and so my suggestion to council is, we do sanction a quote-unquote, "fifth bucket." Um, I don't know if you're calling them goal areas summer or what, but we call it public health. And we start with diverse, diverse, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, and then also, um, um, look at COVID-19-related, uh, community education issues to reduce the pandemic effects on our own local community, as such as what Councilmember Heller was talking about, action, vaccination rates, et cetera. And that with diversity, equity, and inclusion, maybe the shorter-term goal as we flesh it out is, is getting education and understanding this, so that as a council, we're, we're up to speed, um, for something that I think is a conversation and should be, is and/or should be a conversation in every community. So that, that would be my recommendation. I don't know how council feels about it, but I would support that.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Councilmember Addis.
I would support either public health or community health. Um, I just want to add that if we are going to focus on COVID vaccination, um, which I believe is incredibly important, I have a strong preference for addressing that through the lens of equity, as has the state of California. Um, as data is published on the Slow County website, and I absolutely agree with Councilmember Barton, um, that COVID has uncovered multiple inequities within our communities, both around vaccination rates, but also around access to childcare and the number of women dropping out of the workforce. And I am not asking the city, uh, to take that on. We do have wonderful childcare in our city, and I do not get a lot of requests for expanded childcare. But I do want to throw that out there as a piece of things. Um, and then I'll repeat it again. If we're going to go down the increased vaccination road as a goal for our city, we have to pay attention to the equity data around that and make sure we're targeting populations in a way that attends to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm going to say specifically, the data on the county website shows, um, that there are much higher rates of COVID around, in Hispanic communities than in white communities, even though white communities are a greater proportion of our local population. And so if we're going to talk vaccination, we need to unwrap that.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, I, um, would like to echo what, um, Councilmember Addis just said. And also, I want to thank you, Mayor Heading, for your suggestion as well. Um, and I think everything that has been said in this, um, after I brought up this particular subject, has been very insightful, and I agree with everything that has been said, including Councilmember Heller's suggestion to really, um, do better on our vaccination rate here locally. Um, I do believe that we, equity is important. Um, I'm glad that Councilmember Addis did bring that up as a specific way to word this goal, to have that word equity in there, because I do think that it is, it, it is the main focus that affects everything else, right? So I think that it's important to have that word in there. Um, and I'm really excited about the way that this, um, this DEI, DEI has like evolved into a plan that I really didn't have. I just had a concern that I came here with, because it was weighing on my mind, and I know that I had mentioned it in our, our session prior to this, um, summer. We had talked, I talked a little bit about how my, you know, concerns about, um, getting voices heard from other parts of our community and, you know, whatnot. But, but anyway, um, I like what has been said, and I like the direction that we're going with this goal. So, um, yeah, I would support what Council, Councilmember Addis has just proposed.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Heller.
Yes, I, you know, I, I'm in favor of the community health moniker. I think there are a number of things we haven't talked about today that could fit in here, including homelessness and, uh, services for people that are not being served and a number of other things. So I, I think that might be a good, uh, title for this particular goal, uh, that could certainly capture my interest in increasing the vaccination of COVID, as well as DEI issues and other social issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm fine with public health. I mean, community health, it, it doesn't matter, both to me the same, so. Uh, my hands, I forgot to raise my hand, sorry. There's my hand.
It's okay.
What are we going to do with you, Mayor? I'll tell you what.
Mopey. Move me out of the panel.
All right, Councilmember Addis.
I originally had sanitation, my original, before I, uh, came to this meeting, I had community health, actually. Thank you for reminding me, um, Mayor Heading, that I had been thinking about community health, and under that, I had, uh, put, addressed the COVID crisis as well as sanitation. Um, so I like the idea very much, and I could see sanitation under either one of these. I think sanitation is absolutely a piece of community health as well.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, I want to add really quick because, uh, to my original intention as well, is that when I brought up task for, tasks force, I don't know why I can't say that word, but anyway, um, when I brought that up, um, I really wanted to put the emphasis on the fact that it is a, um, it's not just our local government, but it's a, a community issue as well. And I believe that, um, we can really learn from other organizations that are already doing this work. And they've put a lot of hours, a lot of money, a lot of research into these different categories that affect DEI. And I don't want to bring this to the plate as saying, hey, city of Morro Bay, we need to do all the things and fix all the things, right? So I just want to clarify that this is not me expecting, you know, our city manager, Scott Collins, and all of our staff to like take on this major topic. However, I would love to see this, um, be a focus and something that we could use to bring in the knowledge from our surrounding organizations and other cities within our own, as well. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that. Mayor Heading.
And so I, you know, I, I'm not going to add a bunch of stuff to the list, but, you know, under this community health, um, item, you know, as I talked about last night, um, I think our, our county is oblivious to the impacts of, uh, fentanyl and methamphetamine, um, street, uh, abuse and availability, and I am particularly concerned about our kids. And so, um, you know, um, I, I don't want to get a, a list of a thousand things, but, but I'm just going to, going to throw that out as, as an issue of concern. And for me, again, it's just educational, um, trying to raise awareness, um, because it is becoming such a significant, um, public health, community health issue. And it has diversity, equity, and inclusion issues as well. If you look at the stratified data, you will find exactly what you find with, um, vaccinations and, and many other, uh, public health, community health programs and our initiatives, that, um, there is disproportionate availability and/or, um, um, availability and, um, what I'm trying to say, um, access, uh, for individuals, um, that fall into these groups. So I'm going to stop there, because the list, I could go on with a number of other things, but I just, um, you know, I want to say that, that's more for awareness, not much for you, Scott, to do, other than the fact that, um, I think it's important for our kids, so thanks.
Thank you. So I'm going to share, I've been taking notes on this potential, um, goal area that, that it sounds like we have some alignment in adding, um, labeled community health. And I think I hear, I appreciate the additional, um, commentary to qualify kind of the extent of this goal, because it can be massive. Um, so that the labeling of it around community health, and then it really starts with the first understanding what the issues are and how the city can tackle these. Um, having worked a lot with cities, but also counties, many of the things that have been cited, there are county programs, of course, that support, um, these things happening. It's so small, this may be an effort that the city partnering with those programs, I'm sure they already do, but continuing to partner with those programs in a meaningful way, um, to support these things coming to life for the city of Morro Bay. But the, um, first piece around this diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I've listed here as subbullets, some elements around what might be some of the steps that could be taken in the next 14 months. So engaging first in a conversation about this means for Morro Bay, um, potentially as an option to really embed from an equity lens, um, into the current goals. So looking at housing from an equity lens, right? So how that is added into the, um, efforts. Potentially looking into the creation of a unity or a DEI task force or committee, um, looking at what's already been done elsewhere to pull from, um, looking at how city policies can consider DEI when it's being, when those are being written. Related to this, uh, the increase in COVID vaccination rates, but doing that through the lens of equity being on the list, uh, that part of community health can be the support for unhoused population. The connection to sanitation was also highlighted, and then education or awareness around drugs is a public health issue. I put drugs as a overarching, um, those being the highlights of this community health component. Are there, yes, Councilmember Addis.
I appreciate this and I support it, but a word of caution. Um, if we embed equity or community health into our other goals, I believe we risk doing nothing at the expense of trying to do everything within the broader goals. Um, and I especially think this because it's new to us. If we had been doing equity work for a long time, getting educated, had a task force, we were well down the road, I think we would be at a point where we could embed this into other pieces, and we would have enough efficacy that we could still address it. Uh, because it's so new, I really deeply believe community health with equity as a piece of that is, it's important for it to be its own goal, and with COVID, um, obviously is huge, is important to be its, um, its own focus. And I could see as we get, um, better at it, that we then embed it into other things that we do. But I just don't think we're quite ready to weave this into everything else.
I, I agree. I, I support, oh, I'm sorry, I had my hand up. Was I next?
You are next. And I, just before you go, Mayor Heading, I, um, Councilmember Addis, I added into the, um, that piece on embed, I said embed into current goals long-term, but need to first understand, understand it. Does that help clarify it?
Well, I, I just, I don't think we're ready to embed personally. I, I just think we, it's just too new for us. And if we try to embed it, we're going to lose, I, I, I think we're going to lose sight of it, because it's so new that we'll tell ourselves we're doing it, but we aren't really actually doing it. Um, and it'll kind of get lost in the shuffle. So maybe one day, like in the next goal cycle, if we make it a goal now, maybe in the next goal cycle, it'll be good enough to say, you know, we can embed this. But I don't think right now we have the efficacy for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Heading.
The point I was going to make is that it's, my, yeah, the point I was going to make is it's not our current goal number four, which is, uh, increase community engagement and, and communication. To me, that's no longer necessary as a goal. That has become embedded across the organization. Um, so, uh, I'm saying that, that the way we, I, I would remove the word embedded and, and have this as a fifth category, leave it as community health with the items that are under it, and begin to focus in on that, so we don't lose the importance of it. Thank you.
It is deleted. All right, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, um, finish up that, um, that thought that you were, you know, having, um, Councilmember Addis and also Mayor Heading. Um, I, in talking to other cities that went forward with this robust plan to, you know, with their DEI, um, goal, they tried to do all the things and put a lot of money into projects that they felt were what the city needed without, um, getting input from various organizations and from the, the community that they are in fact trying to help. And so they wasted a lot of time and money and effort, um, by making these goals so broad and so big so quickly. And so I'm glad that we're bringing it back to an educational, um, beginning and learning from, you know, from the grassroots up, right? Like this is, like, you know, Councilmember Addis has mentioned, it is a newer topic that cities are addressing. And I think getting to know your community, getting to know the needs of the community before we start acting, um, is a really important thing to do. And so, you know, does that look like a task force that we form with various community members and, you know, religious leaders, um, and organizations that already are, you know, focused on these, these types of issues? I think that that's a great start. And so, um, I'm, I'm in favor of not including them in other goals at this point as well, um, but more just, you know, a separate goal where we can, we can start to learn how to do better.
Councilmember Heller.
I'm confused. What are we doing with this, with this goal?
So, I think, I've put on this, um, page here, so let me try to attempt that the suggestion is that there is a fifth goal theme around community health, and a, a key anchor of that theme is around DEI. And it really is, is in these pieces here, to first engage in a conversation with this means and educate ourselves to understand what are even the needs of the community before creating an action plan or specific sub-goals related to this, or actions that the city is going to take. That maybe a step after this first step, maybe the step is a creation of a DEI task force to, to further flesh that out. And from that, some sort of, depending on what is uncovered or, or learned, that then there's some sort of action plan created. So I think that's the part I'm extracting from the DEI piece. I think there's a, then secondly, the request to say, what can be done through an equity lens around the COVID vaccination rates to increase those percentages, um, amongst different populations? So that's another component within the community health goal. And then some of these other elements, which I don't know that these are immediate steps, is to say, as part of community health, what is the additional support for unhoused population? Dynamics around the public health crisis around drugs? Am I doing a good job of explaining what I think I'm hearing people have said? I see head nods.
Yes. I wasn't sure if the name of the goal was changing or not. I am concerned that it's so broad now, that the COVID-19 issue, which I think is urgent, is going to get lost if you take, if you take a lot of time developing task force and doing all that. But meanwhile, we need to get people vaccinated, so I just don't want that to get lost under this broad umbrella. That's my only comment.
I appreciate that. I, I see this as similar to, um, the work that would need to be done in this area, is similar to what we have in some of these others, which is to say, what are the initial steps? So you may have parallel tracks. So you may have parallel tracks of tasks happening, just like in some of these, that it won't be linear necessarily, but there could be steps taken towards the COVID vaccination piece simultaneously, that initial education is happening related to the DEI space. But they're all under community health.
I hope that's the way it plays out.
Any other comments about the community health one and or additional, I hate to say, but a potential additional goal area? Councilmember Ford.
Can we put in, sorry, can we put an emphasis on the vaccination portion of it? I mean, I know we didn't want to necessarily categorize like step one, step two, you know, highest goal in that category, but I understand where Councilmember Heller is coming from because it is an immediate need at this, you know, right now, I mean, we're in the, still in the middle of a pandemic. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine, you know, as a second person to, you know, still continue with the, all the things that you wrote down for the DEI category, but also putting, you know, the vaccination rate and getting the education out as one of the top immediate priorities. Because I, I see where, what you're saying, Councilmember Heller, I don't want to lose sight of that as well.
I think this is a, is a bit of that prioritization activity that we're doing. So I put up top here, immediate need around vaccination rates, but under the same umbrella continues to be DEI and some of the others. Okay. Are there any other elements that we need to identify as being key themes that we didn't capture this evening? So I think that then, as far as next steps, and then I will turn it over to City Manager Collins and or the mayor, that the next steps from this, I will take these notes that we just walked through, clean them up a bit, work to make sure that I've, I think, well articulated, although it sounds people have been checking that as we've been going, make sure that that is well articulated. And then the ask is for city staff to take this list and permission from the council to really tease it out to what is realistic that can be done immediately in the next 12 to 14 months and what is maybe further of an extension. I, I really, a big part of why I wanted to position that partnership wheel at the beginning is because many of the cities and counties that I'm working with right now, their lists start very similar. And the reality is the kinds of issues that we are dealing with in communities right now, the city organization cannot fix. They can't fix alone, certainly. And in a, in large cities that I work with, they may have very similar lists, the nuance within them may be slightly differently, but they have, you know, a hundred times the size plus of the staff that you have in Morro Bay. And so it, this will be a hard job to prioritize this and distill this down. So I know the staff is quite capable of doing that and I will be there to support them in doing that as needed. But the key will be that when they come back in that October timeframe to share this out with you, that we set really, really, we're realistic about what can be accomplished in this 12 to 14, 14 month timeframe and what can be, is an ongoing element of this goal area that would go into the next goal cycle as well. Councilmember Addis.
I just want to briefly say that we can all be vaccine champions right now. We don't have to wait for this city goal to be implemented. And so I was just Googling that, although I was riveted by what you were saying, Summer. So, but I did just Google, what can we do and, you know, what, the county has a vaccine champion toolkit. And each council member who has social media right now, today, after the meeting, could start posting, could use a Facebook frame, could start sharing information with our community. So I just want to urge each of us to take action as soon as we get off this meeting and not wait for it to be a city initiative or a city goal.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. And I just added as a note on that immediate need, that's an example of something that could be done immediately as a potential action item. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Collins, if you had any comments to make, and if not, then over to Mayor Heading.
I think just send it to the mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think returning it to the city manager is appropriate. No, Summer, you didn't use the term, I think you need the coin for your business and at the end you're going to summarize, S-O-M-M-E-R-I-Z-E, which I think is appropriate for you. Thank you. I just want to say thanks for, one, a very robust conversation. It's great to, to engage in this. Sometimes different viewpoints, different priorities, but that's what councils do. They express their, their passions, their priorities and what they understand to be the, the community's desires and needs. And we articulate that. And, and, and Summer, you did a great job of, in real time, I think Councilmember Heller said it, capturing this stuff for us and getting it down. And that's just so helpful to see it. For me, I'm a visual, so seeing it there displayed before me was very helpful. You know, I, I really talked about organizational effectiveness and capacity on purpose because we face this every time that I've done goals with the city for the last few years, or well, for the last seven years. And I am confident in Mr. Collins and his staff that they'll come back telling us what's doable and what's not doable. The other thing is that we often have council subcommittees. I must tell you, this is an active council that doesn't get in the middle of operations, but when sanctioned by the council, we do get involved in a lot of day-to-day operational things and oversight. And so that's something else I, I just want us to consider as we look at some of these initiatives, that I don't want to create a hundred, you know, different council subcommittees, but we're an active council. And Councilmember Heller is going door to door. I think that's cool. And, you know, I'm serious about the subcommittee issue. It, it really is very functional, helpful, and I know staff appreciates the assistance in a number of different areas. So keep that in mind as we go forward. A lot of times when you have a passion, you are on a subcommittee as a result of that. So thank you again, everybody, for your participation this evening. Thank you to our community. There'll be another opportunity as we come back with the summarized list and input from staff, and we'll have more public comment and a chance again to, to look at these goals and priorities. Good work, folks. Thank you, staff, again, as always, for all that you do. Summer, excellent facilitation, appreciate your leadership in getting us through this. We're not through with you yet. We're going to, I know, continue to use this to help us move these forward. And if I misthanking anybody, thank you, AGP. Thank you, always in the background, doing a great job. We appreciate you very much. And so with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. The next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be on October the 12th, that's Tuesday, at 5:30 PM via Zoom. Have a great evening. Everybody be safe and be well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Summer.
Night, everyone.